I know.
Hey, guys.
Oh, good evening.
Hey, good evening. How's it going?
Good.
Happy New Year to everybody.
Say Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
New Year.
And there we're not expecting anyone to to join.
The the only one is Samalid Hogan. She sent her regrets that she won't be able to attend.
Great, thank you. See who else are we waiting for?
I think we're all set.
We're all set. Great. Well, let's call a meeting to order. Would you please take the role?
Yes, Mary Kate Muren. Max Starks.
Present.
Um, Samalid Hogan. Maurice Lindsay.
Present.
Norm Roldan.
Present.
And Jeff Sattler.
Present.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Ben A. And good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. And why don't we start with our fiscal year 2022 first quarter trust fund report?
Certainly. Good evening, everybody. So to start off, I'd just like to remind everyone for the trust fund reports, what you're looking at is is trust funds, which means that you're not going to be seeing anything of state appropriations, grants, investment income, or her funds. So this is literally just our our trust funds. The first one that we're looking at here is the Gen General Education Trust Fund. Most of those revenues are basically student fees, tuition, miscellaneous revenues. All of our revenues are where we would expect them to be for the first quarter. One line that I'll point out is the tuition remission to the state that we haven't sent any funds to the state. As of the first quarter, that will appear on the second quarter. We usually send those at the end of the first semester. The expenditure of funds are also where we would expect them to be after the first quarter. What one line that I'd like to point out is the N N line, which is construction improvements of facilities. There aren't any expenditures in that line because we usually spend the carryover facilities projects expenses first. So they aren't showing on this on this quarter. If we can move to the next page, we'll be looking at the Health Trust Fund. And both revenues and our and expenses are in line with our expectations for the first quarter. So there are no variances on those reports. Moving to the next page, we're looking at the Capital Improvement Trust Fund. Again, the capital improvement revenues are in line with expectations. The expenditures are comparable to the general education in that you're not seeing the capital improvement expenses in in line N N. Because we use those carryover funds first, the expenses that you do see are associated with waivers that are charged or that that certain students are eligible for. Are there any questions on the trust funds before I move to the vendor expenditure report?
Yeah, John, my only question was what you addressed, which is line N N, you know, so you already you already answered that question. So no other questions from me.
Perfect.
More more just a context point. Good evening, everyone. Matt, great to see you. For new trustees, for for Norm and Maurice, I'm not sure if we've shared this before. John, can you just walk through again this the distinction between trust funds and revenue and state appropriation? And essentially how we can't bank our state appropriation, right? We can't take any leftover money there from the Commonwealth and put it in the bank. And that's so that's why this fee revenue place and these trust funds really are the holder. Just elaborate a little bit on that. That way everybody's got the context for what these trust funds are and how they're separate separate from that other revenue source of state appropriation.
Sure. Yep. Exactly. Like you said, the the state appropriation is another way to word it is a use it or lose it. Whatever we don't spend by the end of the fiscal year, the state would pull those funds back. We can't carry that forward from year to year. There are there are grants that we received. There are, you know, a variety of grants that are not included in in this. So really, this is coming from fees that we charge to the students to is the tuition. It is miscellaneous revenue. So vending revenues, commission, workforce. So those are are, you know, this is considered our local trust funds. These are the local funds that that the college raises. And we have, you know, expenses obviously that go against those revenues. If it turns out that we don't utilize all those revenues in a particular period, we can certainly carry that portion forward. It would find its way on our financial statements on the unrestricted net position. And so, you know, that's really, you know, something to kind of keep in mind for for one-off projects, you know, recent meetings, we've been talking about potentially using those those funds for building 20. So that is where, you know, that is a source of funds that, you know, is available to us.
Thank you.
Okay. If there aren't any other questions, we can move to the next page. And this is our vendor expenditures. So we also provide this report on a quarterly basis. It includes all the vendors that we spend $20,000 or more with. We also have a couple of columns just to put into context whether we're going to capitalize any parts of those expenditures. And if any portion of the funding source came from D CAM. So you'll see that there's one line for the building two masonry work where we intend to capitalize and depreciate that at the end of the year. And also that some of that funding is not all of it has been provided by D CAM. Are there any questions on this report?
Done for me.
Okay, and that's all that I had to present under this topic.
Okay, John, thanks for the overview. Any other overview questions, comments that are offered for John before we move on?
And for me.
Okay, great hearing done. Move into the next section, the audit report, Joe.
Sure. Okay, so this is our 2021 Masva Audit and Report. Masva stands for Massachusetts Office of Student Financial Assistance. So this is essentially an audit of our state aid. So, you know, to be separate from our financial statements, to be separate from the single audit, which is federal aid. This is just auditing our state aid that's awarded through our Student Financial Services Department to our students. This is a clean report. There were no findings. That's important because as as long as there's no findings, we don't need to have another audit for three years. So we'll receive a two-year exemption from this audit. There were no audits from the previous report. So this is, you know, this is consistent with what we would expect to to see. Therefore, there's really nothing worth elaborating on unless there are any particular questions in the report that that you had as you're reviewing it.
I went through the report. I thought there was there was no finding. So to your point, John was very pleased with that, you know, it's consistent with what we've seen in the past. So good work there for all that were involved.
So there is a motion that accompanies this report. Let me scroll forward. Yep, that's perfect.
Yep. So can we have someone read the motion?
I'll read the motion. Motion to move that the Springfield Technical Community College Board of Trustees Committee on Ways and Means pursuant to the provision of Section 22, Chapter 15A recommends to the Board of Trustees the approval of the FY 2021 Massachusetts Office of Student Financial Assistance, report and audit as presented.
Thank you, Jeff. Any comments, questions?
I'll second the motion.
Great. We have a second. Thank you, Norman. Today we take the role.
Mary Kate Muren, Max Starks.
Yes, approve.
Samalid Hogan, Maurice Lindsay.
Yes.
Norm Roldan.
Yes.
And Jeff Sattler.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Nada. Thank you all. Moving right along, our financial update and outlook.
Good evening. So I'm just going to jump in here with just a few introductory introductory comments, provide some context. So we're now halfway through the fiscal year. So the the cash flow and revenue and spending reports that you'd be seeing tonight include six months of actual financial activity and six months of projections. So while we're clear on fall enrollment at this point and the related revenue, the the spring semester won't start for a few weeks. So it's still too early really to have solid enrollment and revenue projections for spring. But so we've made some assumptions. So I just wanted to be clear to everyone that, you know, where we are in the process. So for today, we're projecting spring enrollment to be down 15% from last year. You might recall that in our budget, we projected spring to be down 5%. So the 15% is really representing a budget variance of 10%. And and the unfavorable variance there is is reflecting the uncertainty around the impact of the vaccine mandate for students. And so I just wanted to to put that out there and just have you understand that what you'd be seeing assumes that 15% the the spring enrollment being 15% down from last year. So with that, I'll ask John to present his cash flow, and then we'll hear from Jason.
Thanks. Before before, so you said so 15% down versus last year, but but how much down versus what we had? We had forecasted originally for spring.
So our budget was for we budgeted 5% down. So we budgeted spring to be 5% down from last spring. And what's included in these numbers is is a projection showing 15% down from last year. So it's a 10% difference.
Okay.
Between 15 and 5.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you.
So the cash flow that you're looking at here is that we currently have approximately $5 million available to us. That's at TD Bank. And we're continuing to label the two spikes in cash throughout the rest of the fiscal year. That first one is when we have our first large financial aid dispersment, which takes place during the end of February. And the next spike after that is when we anticipate calling in HERF lost revenue funds. So that will take place right around the middle of May. Again, we'll also be dialing in that figure, you know, certainly as we get closer to that timeframe. So we will.
This, yes, this looks a lot healthier than than normal. Typically, we have some months going down almost to zero, and then it pipes up for obvious reasons. Anything going on differently this year than versus prior years?
Nothing is different this year. When we, if you may recall, that we sent down about $10 million. It was $10 million to fiduciary investment advisors. When we sent that $10 million down, we were assessing, you know, the times in which we have a very low cash balance. So as opposed to sending down maybe 11 or 12 million dollars, you know, that would have been more in line. This graph would have been more in line with what you're used to seeing from previous years. You would have seen a couple of weeks where we got real close to zero. So that was all taken into consideration when we did that transfer at the time.
Got it. That's the difference. Okay, thank you.
Yep, yep, you're welcome. But yeah, as you pointed out, we're expecting to end the year with approximately $3 million, which certainly is healthier than we're used to seeing. So certainly puts us in a much better position. If we can move to the next page. This is a summary by line item. And essentially, the first column shows what the beginning cash balance was at the beginning of this fiscal year, which was approximately $14.5 million. You'll see in the next column, the actual transaction. So the cash that both went out and came in as of January 1st. So that's where we had about 6 million at that point in time. We also have the projection for the second half of the fiscal year. And again, that's where we're looking to get close to the $3 million figure by the end of the fiscal year. And the final column just represents the totals by line item. Nothing appears to be out of line. There don't appear to be any significant variances at this point in time. Are there any questions on cash flow?
All good. No questions for me.
No questions for me. Yep.
Thank you. We could advance to the next slide, please. This is the standard revenue and spending report that's been provided in everybody's packet. This is the the report that we we generally see every month and is the backup to the revenue projection. I will be going over some of these variances in the revenue projection. So if we could advance to the next slide, please. This basically gives us a scenario if spring is down 10%, 15% or 20% just to give everybody an idea of the impact of a of a 5% swing on enrollment. So if we can move to the next slide, please. This is the financial projection that we've provided and ties to the 15% down assumption for spring. Basically, in revenue, we have a bit of a pickup from our formula funding from FY 21 being rolled into the FY 22 base, as well as the assumption that we would be getting an increase of the year one unit increases. And then the big piece in revenue is our tuition and fees. It really is pretty early on at this point to get an accurate projection, but we will know more as time progresses. But this assumes our 15% down from last year. And then as far as expenses go, the the bulk of our savings here is due to salary savings. We have seen some savings from vacancies for full timers as well as part-time salaries being lower than expected due to lower enrollment. Do we have any questions on any of these slides or projections that anyone would like to revisit?
Yeah, Jason, thanks for walking through that. So so if I were to kind of say it a different way, it's fair to say that the the five, the 50% swing is we you you discussed in enrollment is reflected in the 876 down in tuition and fees. And that's offset by some increase in the estate appropriation. So overall revenues will be down 317,000. And then from the expense side, to your point, we're seeing some favorability on salaries, the full-time salaries as vacancies. The part-time is more related to the 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 reduction in 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 students. And then so I guess if that's all true, then I guess my only question is on the operating cost, why would they be going up by 200,000?
We did have a couple of unanticipated expenses. So we have, you know, kind of an offset to some of our vacancies. We have had to have some temp positions come in. So we've had consultants come in to do some of that work. We've had a little bit more unbudgeted expenses for some of our insurance policies as well as some workforce contract expenses that were higher than anticipated.
Got it. Understood. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
Um, yeah, so could we reflect this next year or next report? What the offsets were, at least in a sidebar? So at least we understand that piece is I was I looked at it as well earlier today, and I was had the same question. But now that you explained it, I see it. But if it was on the sidebar on the report, I would understand that's where where it was coming from.
Norm, can you say a little bit about when you mean sidebar? Do you want to see a larger, a larger chart for some of this stuff later?
It doesn't have to be that large, but if you could like quote, you know, an explanation piece of it that it was caused for, you know, temp assurance cost, whatever the overage were that we had to put in there. If it could be earmarked as a line item and and just put in, you know, that's why it was like that. At least because I had a question about that, too. I was like, okay, was it? Why did it increase? If the number should have been down. And and now the explanation is make sense, right? 100%. I I would agree with what the explanation was, but if I would have saw it in a report, it would it would hit me, right?
Yeah, I think that it's a great point. So I think just maybe if we just make me make some arrows, you know, that go from the dollar, the dollar amounts in the variance column, right to the explanation that you have in the bubble. Would it make it clear? Thank, that'd be great. Okay, understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, this is Jeff. I have I have a general question and a couple of comments on the salary aspect historically and going forward. Are the salaries pretty much in budget relative to the revenues we're receiving year over year, even though we're receiving a 15% decline in in student enrollment? And are there any positions in the salary full time that are still not funded? Or or they're not filled by an individual? Do we have any real issues when it comes to that? I mean, we don't have the employment. Obviously, it's down, but are there key areas that we still need to hire that might affect this budget going into the end of the year?
There are open positions that we have currently. And there are quite a few searches that are taking place right now as we speak. A lot of posted positions as well. So, yeah, we we do. And that's, you know, that's where some of our savings is coming from at this point. But those positions are open. And they're being searched. There are other positions that are currently on hold right now to see, you know, how things pan out with enrollment and whatnot. And some some of those positions will be on hold for the duration of the year as well. But that's that's part of what makes up this variance.
Let me let me jump into Jeff and help give a little bit more context. You know, we're trying not to paint with too broad a brush stroke. So there isn't, for example, a across-the-board freeze on all hiring. I think that's a little penny wise and pound foolish. We do have every time there is a vacancy, a great deal of diligence that goes into are are we able to fill this? Is there a need operation for it? And yes, how sustainable is our ability to to maintain that salary? So we're definitely having that conversation internally administratively. So yes, when the person, let's say, retires, like we have our Dean of Admissions, that's an essential position that we know we have to fill. So we're searching for it. When IT people perhaps leave, again, we know that's the nature of the business. We're going to search for all that. But I think you raise fundamentally, though, for us and our engagement with each of you as we put together a budget for next year. Right now, we have those HERF monies, those federal dollars that are essentially plugging the hole. But if you pull that out, that's that $5 million deficit, right, that our CFO has been noting for some time now. And that's the longer term, more difficult consideration for us is how do we shorten that structural deficit when personnel is such a big cost for us as as an institution?
You know, the other thing I can add is that, you know, when I look between, when I look ahead to the rest of this fiscal year, you know, right now, because the revenue isn't settled yet for spring, it's hard to know really if we need to make any adjustments on the expense side because it looks like we're coming out to pretty close to budget break even at the bottom, at a, you know, from a bottom line perspective. Once we, you know, a month from now or six weeks from now, we have a better sense of where spring revenue is landing. Then if it turns out it's less than what we expected, then we will actively work to adjust our spending in the rest of the year. So it's this dynamic process. And, you know, unlike sort of different kinds of businesses where every day you have business coming in and you have your revenue and you're sort of tracking it day to day. Here we sort of wait, we're waiting, waiting, waiting. And then, you know, in in four to six weeks, we'll know what the revenue is for the semester. And then we know how we can adjust our expenses. So it's a little bit different than than, you know, how some other businesses work in terms of understanding and then editing given point in time what the what the revenue is. And just to point out here at the bottom of the slide where it says, you know, if there's a fluctuation up or down, let's say for every 5% up or down in spring enrollment, that'll impact the bottom line by about $380,000. And we'll see on the next slide that it's about $480,000 in revenue for each 5% and then $100,000 offset in expenses. So just to kind of put things in perspective there.
Thanks for that, Andrew. Just question on on expenses. So what levers do we have? Right? You're talking about six weeks from now. What what leverage do we have in expenses to make a change that could offset a a revenue decline?
So there are expenses that we just have, you know, there are things that are in the budget that we haven't spent money on yet. So if we needed to, we could pull back on some spending.
Or like, like what? The question is like, like what? Like what are the levers? What can't we stop spending on?
Supplies, equipment, you know, there. I mean, there's certain things that we have to spend on anyway, things like utilities. But the things in the in the operating line, so the the upper that that I can't point out, but like the the where it says other and then right above it, operating, it's the things in that line item that, you know, tend to be at the discretion of managers across campus. And so it might be that we say, well, there's something we're going to get this year, but we're just going to have to wait and get it next year, that that sort of thing. So we would be looking at that in a more detailed level if it becomes necessary to to pull back on some spending.
Got it. I was trying to wrap my head around what's material enough. I mean, we're talking about pens and paper, right? We're talking about like something that could be meaningful enough to offset a revenue decline. Like what would what would they be? I'm just kind of curious what those line items would be. I was thinking it would be more if we saw a decline in in our revenue from from a enrollment decline to be more around part-time. That line would be impacted just naturally because we wouldn't have as many students we'd have to support. But beyond that, like what could be material enough? What, you know, given we already we'd already be, you figure six feet from now, we're well into well into the that 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 next semester, like what could we pull a lever on to really get some meaningful expense reductions on?
No, this is a good question. And and you're right about the part-time salary. So like adjunct salaries are definitely impacted by changes in in enrollment. And that's reflected in that $100,000 offset to the you know, for every 5% change in in enrollments. But there are definitely there are things we there's a lot in that $8 million is pretty much fixed. But there's also a lot in there that that is variable as well. Some new equipment is relatively expensive. It looks like Dr. Cook might want to jump in.
Well, let me add, Mac, that's a it's such an important question because I want to share particularly with this committee how we handle this administratively because we've been in this place, Mac, before, but the number wasn't a deficit of 45,000. It was 450,000. Right? So for this committee to know the ability to pull the lever, let's say, on personnel takes a long time. Those collective bargaining agreements require, you know, months worth of notice. There's what we call impact bargaining, all these different things. So the personnel side is a longer and more prolonged lever to try to utilize. So that's why this would be the sort of latest we would be utilizing that. So in past years, when we were running a larger deficit by this point in time, we were having conversations about personnel and potentially having freezes more permanently in place for the remainder of the academic year, the fiscal year. Mac, I'll give you an example, though. There are some measures. Let's say we had an order slated for March for, you know, 50 laptops as part of our refresh to the tune of a couple hundred thousand. There are some of those types of levers that we would definitely search out and find. So some of the more capitalized types of considerations, we do tend to have a few of those still in play between now and the end of the fiscal year that we would use. What I would say to to the committee here is is the fact that our team has helped us manage to essentially a budget that washes further enrollment declines is a real testament to how on top of this we are. You don't want us to only be here and then having to activate things. We've been mapping this, managing this now for months, right? To ensure that essentially the the budget is absorbing this very predicament. Also, great management, again, by our team to stay on top of this. Mac, we do have a couple levers. If we needed to, the timing of things, maybe even pushing it into the next fiscal year, we've done that in past years as well.
I have another question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yep. So so um we I I as I'm looking at the the numbers overall, the infusion of the $5 million from the the Fed or, you know, Neo, Congressman Neo, that helped us a lot in this round. How's that? How's that? Next, next year, we're not going to have that infusion. So how are we looking at that in the future? Are we going out asking for more money? Is there another way that we're going to have this infusion again? So we won't have this problem? Or are we? I mean, are we just going by the numbers of students, basically?
So that that's a great question. And we'll we'll have a chance to talk about that more at the next meeting. So in a few slides, we'll talk about the budget process. And it it's it's a really great point. You know, we started without the without the HERF funding this year, we would have had a $5 million deficit. And so, you know, the assumption is going into next year will essentially be at that same point. And and next, you know, next month, we'll bring a multi-year you know, scenario analysis where we can look and see, well, what does that look like if we don't change anything? So great, great question.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on this slide?
Listen here.
Okay, we can, okay, so on this, I'll this this is just a quick, so because we're not sure yet where spring enrollment is going to land. I just wanted to give you a sense of, you know, the range of enrollment scenarios, you know, how how different enrollment scenarios can impact revenue. So this is really just the revenue side, not the expense. So this is really just the revenue side, not the expense side. So very quickly, all the way on the right, um, where it has zero, um, on the graph. It's, uh, that's our approved budget, assuming that fall was down ten percent from last year and spring down five percent. So the zero represents no variance from, from budget. Uh, where we actually landed at the end of fall was about at a plus sixty one thousand, essentially with the percentages were the same as the budget. But there were some details that, you know, resulted in revenue being a little higher. So, and you can see if you go over toward the middle is the scenario we're presenting today, the fifteen percent spring being fifteen percent down with fall being ten percent down from last year. Um, but you can see if, if things are different from this fifteen percent. Uh, projection, if we're down twenty percent in spring. That's more like a one point three million dollar variance from budget on the revenue side. And if we're down twenty five percent, it's more like one point eight million. Variance from budget, uh, in terms of revenue. There would be some offsetting expense savings. But, um, this is really just to give you a sense of, you know, what, what a different revenue scenarios look like at different, um. At different enrollment levels for spring. So. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer, but just wanted to give you a sense of context here. And if there are no questions, we can move on to the next slide. Uh, one more. So, um, so as we said earlier, we're halfway through the year and, um, so. It's time to start talking about next year's budget. So we, we get, we get six months in and now it's time to talk about the budget for next year. So, uh, this chart maps out the budget milestones for this committee. And so across the top, you can see the dates of the upcoming Ways and Means Committee meetings. And, um, so today we're just presenting the budget process timeline. Uh, at the next meeting, we can all celebrate Valentine's Day with a discussion of preliminary assumptions for the budget. And a multi-year scenario analysis. Jason is actually is working on a three to five year. Look out to see what does our budget look like, you know? Uh, with different kinds of assumptions for things like fee increases and, uh, salary increases and. You know, potential increases in the state appropriation, et cetera. So we'll take a look at that next month in, in anticipation of. Starting to do the budget work, um, in this committee at the March meeting. And so at the March meeting, we'll bring the first draft of the budget. Uh, at the April meeting, we'll bring the second draft of the budget. And then at the main meeting, ideally we'll bring a third draft of the budget, which would be. Uh, a final draft for committee approval. And so in between these meetings is when those of us on campus are doing the work to. Come up with these, these different, um, versions of the budget. And so we have a, a process planned to. Engage stakeholders across campus. So we'll start out, Jason's going to start, um. Meeting with budget managers, doing training, uh, providing feedback, giving guidance, uh, for entering budgets and understanding how to do that. Um, then we're going to have opportunities within the schools, divisions and departments for, um, budget discussions and input. So there'll be meetings that will allow for people to, it's really two-pronged. One is really to do some education for people across campus around the budget and what it means. And the different components, et cetera, for those people who want to better understand. And then the other piece is just to get input. So we have some stakeholder input on some budget decisions. And in addition to that, we'll probably do some presentations campus wide, uh, with an opportunity for Q and A. So really want to get more voices into the budget process this year. Uh, one thing I just also wanted to point out, going back to the comment made earlier, is this question about, um. You know, for the committee to start thinking about. What appetite there might be for using reserves to balance the budget? Both in FY twenty-three and potentially ongoing years. So we, we did put, um, a fair amount of money into reserves using the herd funds. And then the question is, to what extent will we need to, what will we do to balance the budget for next year? Understanding that we're starting with this five million dollar deficit potentially. And so we'll certainly do everything we can, um, on this end to. You know, close that gap, but it will be difficult to close that bigger gap in one year. And so really this is just sort of a heads up about, you know, the need to have that conversation at some point in the future. So I'll stop there and see if there are any questions or comments.
So Andrew, I think what I hear you saying is as part of the drafts, you're also going to include consideration for this committee. To bring to the full board, using the reserves to balance the budget. So it's not that we need to go off and think about on our own, how much would we be willing to, to use? That'll be part of the whole, little discussion around the, the budget drafts. Is that correct?
That's correct. Uh, you know, really what it comes down to is trade-offs. So at different levels of. Use of reserves, there'll be different levels of required, you know, expense, you know, cuts in expenses. And so we can say, you know, we can, we can bring the budget down to a certain level. Um, you know, we can bring that, we can reduce the gap to, let's say, if we reduce it to a million dollars, it'll mean a lot more cuts than if we reduce it to three million dollars. So, you know, but we'll, we'll bring those scenarios and recommendations to this committee for discussion.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that the committee understood that it wasn't that we need on our, on our own, think about how much reserve you want to use. As part of the conversation, what we're talking about here would be the ask of reserves. So we can consider it as part of the, the drafts we're going to walk through as opposed to doing something separately.
Yes, I mean, it might be helpful at the next meeting, before we get into the first draft, even think about, you know, if the committee's saying. We need for the college to come back with a break even budget, or we need for the college to come back with at least, um. You know, with no more than a deficit of a certain amount, you know, if there's some thinking around that, that, that's helpful. And if you want us to just come with a few different scenarios of what that would look like, we can do that as well.
Yeah, I think the best context for this committee in terms of how we run this committee is for that to be a part of the conversation. So here's the, here, we went through all the due diligence, here's the budget gap, here's the, here's the potential use of, of reserves to close the gap. Here's some other things we may be doing back to, to trustee Norman's comment, but here's some other ways we could potentially get revenue, right? Consider all of that. And then what would that mean for funds that are left over in reserves, not only this year and for twenty-three, but then years to come? Right? That's why what you were, what you were describing in three to five years is so important. So we can look at it not just for, in the context of twenty twenty-three. If we're going to be using reserves, but what does it mean for outer years? So all that is part of the conversation would be helpful.
Exactly. Thank you. Yeah, we will definitely bring that to you.
Excellent, thanks.
And I think, uh, is there any other questions on the slide, questions or comments? Okay, we're ready to move on.
Great, thank you, Andrew. Facilities update.
Thank you, Matt. I'll take it from here. I just want to first thank, uh, Dev Avery, certainly, and. Uh, Andrea for a lot of work. We've been working on this for the last six, seven months or so, actually meeting monthly. I took a full tour of the facilities to appreciate what we're doing. The idea behind what I'm going to provide to you, this information. Is to have the trustees and everyone listening in, an appreciation of the amount of real estate we own. And the determination on how we make the decisions or they make the decisions on what is important and what needs to be done. Um, if you go to the first slide, as you could see that there's, there's a lot of information in the next three slides. I'm just going to keep it as an overview, trying to keep this to ten minutes or less. But basically what the first section and one slide represents are the funded projects that we. Are looking at and doing based on the master plan that was looked at, I believe it was two thousand nineteen, perhaps, was that correct, Deb? Um, and from that master plan, working with D CAM, what are the priorities? What is, what is important? So when you see in this funded projects, it is from the budget that we funded in two thousand, uh, twenty-one. And two thousand twenty, now we're going to go two thousand twenty-two. So we have six point four million. So where did that money go? Because understand our fiscal year end versus the timeline that it can take for some of these projects from start to finish. Can mo- can go over one, two, three, four years. So having the, 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 to be able to follow that under the process. Um, is a tremendous task, quite frankly. And I'm impressed on how much, uh, due diligence and, and constant monitoring there is with all of this. So when you see the twenty can, uh, campus master plan projects, the, the next slide, I'll dig, dig into it a little bit for you. Um, of what we have projected for what it's going to cost, what we've expensed, what will carry over into the following years. And then separately is the D CAM funded proj- uh, projects that we received money in nineteen from the state. Of twelve point one million dollars that we have to spend before FY twenty-three June. So that's twelve point one million. What projects are we looking at? Where are they in the development? And as you go on campus, you'll see, hopefully from this, at least an appreciation, oh, they're constructing, you, I'm an understanding of. Why we're fixing these sidewalks or why we've got these fire escapes that need to be fixed, et cetera. And there's a, there is a lot of thought and a lot of, uh, following to that. So, um, that's what I'm going to focus on with you. So if you could go to the next slide. The STCC capital five-year plan. And if you notice in green at the bottom, I start from the bottom and work my way up. The bottom number is the consolidation of what we are looking at between projects. And then that first section in purple there, um, I want to talk a little bit about that. But what we're dealing with, with where our budget money is coming from, and that you could see from the first slide, we have budgeted. In our monies, six point four million dollars. So where did that go? So there's your total working backwards. In the first section, uh, it's, it's, it's. Broken out where you have deferred maintenance. Well, we have a tremendous amount of deferred maintenance. But what are the priorities of deferred maintenance? And what is the impact if we don't fix that? Such as, um, fire, uh, life, fire, safety and security. But we can't have by code, fire escapes that are not managed, that are not working properly. That's an emergency. That's something we have to fix as a priority. Uh, furniture fixtures, equipment, things that we absolutely have to purchase. So when you're looking at these items within. For an example, deferred maintenance, emergencies, energy savings program, there are projects going on that are being managed by Deb. And, you know, accounted for by Andrea in a number of different areas. Now. I can recall as a trustee, a couple of years ago, we got hit by lightning. It was a million dollar cost to one of our buildings that we didn't foresee. Well, this is a moving, moving, uh, target where what we're budgeting for and how we're, you know, in process and accounting for each project. What it's going to cost in the timeline. Well, yeah, that's our best wish list. But if we have an emergency, we're going to take monies from another project. They might have to put that on hold to make sure we get that emergency funded. But we have the money allocated and we have a plan and that's what we're going to try to stick to. So that first section, when you see it. We're allocating, uh, two point three million dollars under these areas. And each one of those areas have specific, um, projects in detail. And the top section are the projects that were identified for use of these monies in all these different areas. And if you notice the certified study cost, I bring that to your attention on the left-hand side at the top. If you can scroll to that, thank you. This is where any project over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on campus has to get the blessing of D CAM. So we have to apply to them and they either do the study themselves or they tell Deb Ha and Andrea, John, how, how, how we have to. Do that study. Now, let's take any one of those as an example. We have an estimation as the budget. And then we have actual expense against it. But the cost of the, of the, um, of the D CAM study is in place. And those are all studies that have been completed. And those costs help Andrea determine, okay, we might have been high on the budget, we might have been low on the budget. Now we've got to go to the market and get quotes for construction. So as much as we accounted for it in two thousand twenty-one's budget. We may not start that project in two thousand, two thousand twenty-two, if you can imagine. Because of, might take six months for D CAM to approve the project, another four or five months for construction bids, et cetera, to be able to then start the project. But we've allocated it, we've accounted for it, we're watching it and we're proceeding through. So these are all. Um, monies from the budget for all of these projects determined by that, uh, master plan and management of the college of what's a priority. And, um, that, that's one aspect of what we're dealing with, um, and following through. So you'll notice there, the total, uh, for the twenty-two budget is four million. So, so it, it foots, if you will, you've got four million ninety-nine thousand plus the two million three twenty-six. That's the six point four million allocated within the budget over the last two years, um, to fund these projects. And going forward. So, uh, you know, you, you can see, um, you could, and, and you as trustees, you can ask any questions. I can't give you the overall answer, but I can assure you, Deb can give you any detail you want out of anywhere, where they are with everything and why there's whys and. And how there's hows, but, um, you know, you, you'll see that. The second aspect of what we did was look at, okay, the D CAM, if you could go, um. I'm going to finish with the D CAM and summarize, ask Deb to make a comment or, or Andrea and John and any trustee question you have. Feel free to add, uh, ask, um, but I want to at least give you a sense of what you're looking at, so you have a better perspective. So if you look at the STCC capital, um, five-year plan with D CAM. If you look at that side, the D CAM five-year plan, this was money, as you recall, that was allocated from the state for facilities. That was determined what is most important. You notice there that there are five D CAM studies. Uh, that you can, that you can, um, I don't see that next slide on, if you could put that next slide. The green section is on top, there you go. So in green, in green are completed projects that we have used monies from the twelve point one million. Okay? And if you notice there, that campus, uh, envelope and roof study was pretty sizable. That's just the study. So of the roof study, from the monies that we're getting from D CAM, it was determined where are we going to put those monies? Um, and you'll find that there's a number of studies in the second section of construction and process. That we're trying to get done before year, uh, before June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Now, we think that, we hope the state will, will move that out a little further. So, you know, when you look at, again, all the studies that we had to do, what we have to then revise, make sure we've got the budget accounted for. And then go to the market to get the construction, to get the, to get it to start. We may be fighting time to get this done before June of twenty-three to use that money. That is a, there's always a potential there and we recognize it, but, you know, this is the timeline that we're working on and the reason and rationale. So you can see what has been used to date, what is projected for the total and how it's going to carry over. Um, into that twelve point one million funded. Um, so that, that is an, an idea of. In green, the projects that have been completed, as you can see, some of them are smaller, so anything under, you know, that, that amount. I mean, um, they've been completed, it's been used, great, let's move on and get the rest of the, the facilities that we determined that we. I'm not, I'm a trustee, we determined, they determined what is important and, and needed. Going backwards as a summary, based on the master plan and the funds available. We do have a lot of deferred maintenance and I won't go into that, uh, but it's in, it's a lot more than what you're seeing here by any means. Because of the million square feet of real estate that we have to manage and we're unique as a college, we are, we are burdened with so much real estate. But being on a campus next to a, uh, you know, the, the historical site. Um, we have a lot more, uh, requirements that the regulations, whether federal or state law. Requires us to do and process. So it is a, it is a task, but appreciate. And I'll leave it at that. I'll, I'll leave it up to questions and have Deb or, or Andrew answer anything you'd like as well. But appreciate that. Getting into the budget, how much can we budget this year for improvements? What, and, and I thought this is important for the trustees, especially on our committee, to understand this aspect of when they come to us. For a capital budget of X, where is it going to go? And having this information. To realize what we're budgeting and what we need to do and how we're accounting for it that might overlap. These, these budgets right here are into twenty-three and into twenty-four, probably. Um, but we have the money allocated, we've identified the need and outside of any, any, you know, unforeseen. Emergencies, again, back to the original budget and what we were looking at with, within. It can be moved around a little bit, but I think the task is there and I think management's doing a, a very good job from my perspective. And the work I've done with them on this and the detail that is provided to you as a summary. To appreciate what we're dealing with and how we're accounting for it year over year. So I'll, I'll stop there. Um, Deb, how'd I do? Yeah? Okay.
I said, yeah, so I guess I, I'll jump in. So, um.
Great.
First, first, first with a, with a comment. So, so first, uh, Jeff, thanks so much for jumping in here and, and walking through this with the team. There are certainly a lot of detail here and we do see the summary to, to your point, but we, we do realize there, there, there is and there should be, but a lot of details supporting all this. So, so I want to thank you for, 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 for raising your hand to jump in. So, so. For 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 raising your hand to jump in. So so my my question is, you know, just overall, do you have a good sense for? For this, these projects being the right projects that is focused on where we need to be strategically and in that we have the right focus on this?
From my perspective, yes, because um I did with Andrea and Deb drill into each and every line item. I didn't look at the numbers of budget, but the rationale of what needs to be done. And it's very, you know, it's very uh realistic and this is nothing to do with the building and the vote we did last month. This is, this is what we're dealing with. Day to day and what the priorities are to keep the campus active, safe. Um, and and the infrastructure, we have sidewalks we have to fix, that could be considered an emergency. You can't have a crumbled sidewalk and a liability issue. You can't have, you know, certain things that are absolute necessities we have to do and you build into all the other things. To uh keep these buildings maintained to run our run our student programs. But yes.
Okay. And then last for me, just an ask, you know, now that you you've got this this knowledge, you're well up to speed and well versed on this and I I'd ask if you could just stay close. You know, so maybe once a quarter, just continue to work with Deb, you know, and Andrea, just to kind of make sure you're up to speed and you can continue to give this committee the update on kind of. That that things are on track where you described it. That would be be my ask of you.
But not a problem. I we were talking about that and we, I didn't know, you know, if the committee wants us or wants me to make this report quarterly or. However you want to, but this is now, this has been all developed as well. This is not something that, you know, this is for us and for for us to review. They've got their more detailed reports that, you know.
Sure.
I don't need to be getting involved that depth.
No.
Is a summary, yes. And I think Deb, you can do that pretty quickly, right? Updating these quarterly.
Yes, yes, that is correct.
Excellent. Thank you all so much, Deb and Andrea. Thanks so much for for supporting. Jeff, really, really appreciate you dropping in here. This is, this has been a good update.
No problem at all.
Any other questions of Jeff?
Actually, I do want to commend um seeing the report coming from a company like Bay State and see how you guys keep your campus going. Oh, my God. I'm looking at the numbers. I want to commend the team and how hard they worked to keep, you know, the campus going and. Believe me, the numbers I see over there is not the numbers I'm seeing over here. And and to see how well you guys do the work, what will you have? I, as a board member, I I'm proud to see that. So I commend the team and everybody, uh, please relate that to the team uh further down.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Norman. Thanks, Deb.
I I'll offer comment to Mac, uh, and then I'll save save the the rest then for my my other part of it. Jeff, we can't thank you enough. I I think to to Mac and to the committee. Trustee Sattler really got under the hood, right? Really looked within. Um, and the fact that he's providing that that comment back, I think, is a testament to the team we have here. Uh, Deb Avery, Andrew Nathanson and and our administration finance folks. All of this is really, I think the term was was in order to maintain. This is not a lot of nice to have, this is gotta have. Kind of work that we're trying to to continue to stay after. None of us, by the way, want to spend two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars on a roof and envelope study. But as Jeff and I talked about, right? This is the world of the public sector, so so different from the private sector. And I think, again, Jeff provides that assurance to this committee that this is in fact what we are wedded to. That working uh of the Commonwealth requires us to do work this way, even though it's almost unconscionable sometimes that we're going to spend two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. To only learn more about how much more we have to spend on a particular project. But nevertheless. Uh, Jeff, again, thanks for helping bring that that translation. Um, I I would offer this to this committee in particular. We talked about two different sources of funding, college funding and D cam funding. And we do get money that twelve point one million spread over five years. We did have that from the Commonwealth to help with a lot of these projects and we try to. Keep them clear, but also separate and distinct. It's the college money that I do worry about in our forecasting. We've almost put in and again, Mac and folks can attest this, three point one million dollars. In a facilities line for these projects, separate and beyond what the Commonwealth has provided us. We may not be able to sustain that, given the challenges we face as a as a as a college with our enrollment and with the budget. That may be one of the places we have to start to pull back on painfully, unfortunately so. Uh, because we just can't afford that level of investment in a facility. Now, again, I just use the term gotta have as opposed to nice to have. But these are the types of trade-offs, again, that our CFO mentioned in terms of some of the areas that we may have to cut. In order to to navigate the next couple of years. So again, great framing, much appreciation to our team. Thank you, Jeff.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on facilities? If not, we'll move right into the president's report.
Great. And so for just on this slide before, I have a a real brief deck that I'll go through with everybody again, trying to frame some of the some of the fiscal considerations of of who we are as a community college. Um, again, thank you to our team. Uh, these are really robust. Uh, healthfully detailed presentations that we have now in in ways and means and some thankful to Andrea, uh, John Tuju. Uh, Dorothy, Jason Cohen, Deb Avery for being here and being part of this today. Thank you. Um, obviously, again, the key piece that has helped stitch us together this year is those federal dollars. Uh, to trustee Roldan's question about next year. Uh, I don't know that I see an appetite at the federal level for further sort of bailouts like we got from the CARES Act and then the subsequent higher ed. Emergency Act. So I don't know that we can look to the feds to to figure this out for us or help us. Um, what I wanted to do is segue a little bit to share, well, what about all this ARPA money? Right that we hear about both Massachusetts got four billion in ARPA and the city of Springfield got like a hundred and twenty-four million themselves. What, if any, will flow to S T C C? And in some ways, um, there's not great news to share on that front. Um. Basically, the way that the legislature engaged with the governor on the four billion in ARPA is they went back and forth, you've made seen it flat on the meat a little bit. But the community colleges got about forty-three, forty-four million dollars and it's going to help with things like uh workforce training. Um. I'm looking at my list here, student mental health, food insecurity and uh an endowment match. So some of the work that we do with our college foundation for every dollar raised, we can match that against some state monies. Forty-five million is not a lot uh in the scheme of a four billion dollar um. Uh, pot of money, but nevertheless, that's where we landed. And if you divide that by the fifteen colleges, it's it's less than three million dollars for S T C C. So I share that because there's not a huge windfall uh that we can anticipate from the Commonwealth. Uh, that's going to come to us as things are right now. The city and their hundred and twenty-four million, uh, again, we're engaged with them on what that looks like, but again, they're not, they're not going to provide that. Uh, college, college to the tune of, let's say, two or three million dollars. Um, so we are looking and it's to be determined how we're going to try to engage with the city on potentially making an ask and making it worth their while. But all that is to say, um. Again, there are not huge windfalls that are going to come for this that are going to land on our on our door. Um, let me set that against some conflicts. Um. This, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the state appropriations we talked about, STIC already gets the second largest. Dollar amount of all fifteen community colleges. So in case there's a question around our own efforts to advocate for our needs and to and to do that first. By statute, we are, and I say this just as a given for trustees, we're not allowed to lobby. So in case you're wondering if we need to ramp things up with folks in Boston, uh, we can't hire lobbyists. Uh, but we do advocate. Uh, and again, our advocacy translates in other ways. One is preserving. That level of state appropriation and getting the second largest, even though we are not the second largest community college. And it's also that uh from a year ago, economic development bill, where we got five million. That was preserved in there to help us with our building twenty uh school of health tech park relocation. So we are. Uh, using all the levers and all the all the uh and knocking on all the doors that we possibly can. So that's a little bit of the outlook. On ARPA uh state and local fund. For me, let me just pause there and see if if the committee has any questions on that.
Yeah, I'm yes, uh, Dr. Cook. I too have one question. Um, I hear the word historic, historic, historic. Uh, we're in a historic location. We know the story about S T C C. The have we approached to start commission to help us with historic funding for our buildings? And how's that look for us if we do? Or if we can't?
I don't know the budget for the Mass historic permission, uh, but I know it's pretty modest. Uh, so I don't know that they have millions because really we talk in terms of facilities, right? Of millions. So we don't really have that. Um, again, we'll see with the federal infrastructure bill how they allocate or engage with higher education and then maybe some opportunities there, but. Unfortunately, the designation of historic is nice, but often doesn't come with dollars attached. And in some ways, I'll give the trajectory. Um. Not even if, but when we are able to extract ourselves from building twenty, we want to be able to take that building down. It is, it is the most prudent thing to to demo that building. Our friends at Mass historic likely may say, we deem that a historic building, we don't want you to do that. So not only do we not gain some support and investment in dollars from them to help us with these buildings, they may stand in opposition, quite frankly. To us reducing our footprint. So it's a tough thing. Uh, it is, it is a a double-edged sword carrying that historic designation.
Thank you.
So as we, as we, I'll transition to this this modest little slide deck. Let me share this outlook with, again, this committee. Here we are kicked off to. Uh, twenty twenty-two, I I was smiling at the front and Mac, this idea of it's not new normal anymore, just the normal. This is, this is the normal. We're still on Zoom. We're still putting one foot in front of the other. We're still contending with COVID mitigation, COVID navigation. I would offer to this committee and I'll share. Um, more of an outlook at the full board meeting at the end of the month. You know, really, our priorities for this calendar year are certainly continuing to navigate COVID. Um, putting together a budget and we're going to need all of your help, this committee in particular. Um, developing the next strategic plan and certainly nothing like a global pandemic to really think about. Who are we going forward and how how do we focus on that? Um, and certainly uh extracting ourselves from building twenty, that's a major domino for us. If we can really get that funding, we're going to know by May, June. Uh, where we land with that. To that, uh, I have not heard, right, that those ARPA dollars somehow are going to up the number of capital projects that E cam that Massachusetts is going to fund. We were one of twenty submissions. So that building twenty, uh, school of health relocation, we were one of twenty, eleven community colleges in total requested. We expect that they're only going to fund about five or six of them. Again, I think we've really made our case, really honed the previous submission. Uh, so I like our chances. I think we have literally turned over every stone as part of that process. Let me just segue from some of the priorities and the outlook down the road. And again, with this kind of team, uh, I really like our chances with putting one foot in front of the other and continuing to do that. I want to touch on the equity agenda. We do anticipate the commissioner of higher education, Dr. Carlos Santiago, who will join us at the full board meeting at the end of the month. He's on his rounds, he's making his way around the colleges. Um, he is going to talk about uh the the uh work by the department of higher ed and again, the the value that the board of higher ed from Massachusetts place on the equity agenda. And again, that really is trying to address those gaps, particularly for students of color with their retention and their graduation. Community college are so essential to that. Let me take the next slide, though. Um, if we can make that a little bit bigger. You know, we really do run lean. And I really want to stress that point to this committee in particular. When you take uh our fee revenue and when you take that state appropriation and you map that, you'll notice. The the per student spending, the community colleges in Massachusetts have the least amount that we spend per student. We actually have less than K twelves and certainly less than vocational technical high schools. You see at twenty-one thousand on average per student, when we're at thirteen thousand per student. You can see what the others. Now granted, as you go to the left on the chart, those institutions are also charging their students more. So there is a bit of a sort of value consideration here of how much are you charging versus then how much in turn they could spend on their students. But all this is to say. Um, it's not to just say and and bemoan to all of you, what was us, our community colleges, we're not as funded, at least that we need to be. Let me, let me, let me put one more. Let's do this this last slide here, though. Uh, sorry, this next slide here, uh, to give you some kind of a comparison between a little bit of the, in this case, Boston, we'll look, we'll look east for a second. Take an institution like Tufts. The median family income is two hundred and twenty-five thousand of the students who attend there as opposed to Bunker Hill Community College where it's less than forty thousand. You also see tough spends on average seventy thousand per student, whereas Bunker Hill spends thirteen thousand per student. Again, this is the mission, though, that we live as community colleges. We are an access institution and we absolutely ensure affordability. Um. There also are considerations, though, when you have less resources to uh help and support students through their educational journey. It does have very real consequences to it. Um, so to this, what can we do about this? We're never going to become, of course, the Tufts of the world with, you know, billions worth in an endowment. Uh, and again, a relatively smaller size because Bunker Hill Community College still has probably about twelve thousand students larger than Tufts. We go to the next slide. What some of the research and indicators show is that, well, how much would it cost to really turn around these trends with our retention and graduation rate? Given that we are an open-door institution, that we don't limit, that we are not exclusive, we really do cast. Cast open invitation. It's about fifteen hundred per student. And to that, what does that fifteen hundred give us? Again, I'll take the next slide. Is the ability to invest in employees, two-thirds of our budget, right, is personnel. Fifteen hundred dollars allows us to hire more of those college navigators, learning coaches, advisors, peer mentors, and people who do financial aid and career advising. All of that really is an investment in people because if you take the four thousand students, that's that was our head count from this past fall. Multiply that by fifteen hundred, you got about six point four million dollars. That's the kind of dollars, six point four million a year. If it were possible, would really ramp up our ability to hire more folks, keep those folks and really have them engaged. Uh, and supporting of students. Let me see what the what the what the next slide might be. So as a step towards that, uh, there is this bucket of money uh that we are referring to as success funds. And it is an attempt to at least get us off the sort of starting point. It's not six point four million dollars just for S T C C, but it is seven million dollars for the community college is in the current uh in in past fiscal year. And again, in the current fiscal year, it's ten million dollars again for fifteen community colleges to share. So we are trying to invest. And we are using those dollars to hire personnel and service to try to support students and help them with uh graduation and retention. So again. I wanted to try to just zoom out a little bit for trustees and for this body in particular and look at what are the, what are the economics of funding of higher ed? We are the least funded sector of higher education in Massachusetts. Nevertheless, there are ways that we are trying to sort of move that to help support our students. We are an access institution. We are going to continue to try to work at this. I hope that was helpful. Happy to take questions.
No question.
It was helpful. Go ahead, sorry.
I was I was just gonna say, you know, it is helpful to look at it from a different perspective, right? I mean, we we don't see this, you know, all the time, but um. I like to spend a little more time, you know, with this myself and kind of kind of wrap my head around it before I'd have more intelligent questions to ask.
Appreciate that. Norm, did you, did you want?
I I also agree. Um, it was, it was good insight how, you know, you're looking at your future plan and how. Other ways of uh us investing, investing in a college, but that's a good insight. Thank you very much.
So again, that's uh, that's, I believe, where we are uh agenda-wise. Again, wanted to give some context, perspective, my great thanks to the team. Thank you again, trustee Sattler. Uh, trustee Starks, I hand it back to you. Um, we are, we're coming out and I'm coming out of the gate in twenty twenty-two. You know, keeping after it, a lot of proactiveness, um, obviously internally. Wanted to be sure that you see a lot of the work uh that goes on uh with our administrators, but again, looking forward to working closely with this committee all all year.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Appreciate that that update. Uh, there's no old business, any new business. Uh, hearing none. Um, our next meeting is, as Andrea said, on Valentine's Day, February fourteenth. And do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn?
A second?
Second.
Great. Thank you all. And Nick, would you call the role, please?
Mary Kate Mirren, Max Starks.
Yes.
Samalid Hogan, Maurice Lindsay.
Yes.
Norm Jordan.
Yes.
And Jeff Sattler.
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Nadia. Thank you all very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.